Am I on now? Yeah. Okay, welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. And the first thing we are going to do is call our meeting to order and we're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
We'd like to welcome Reverend Beth Johnson of the Palomar Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, and she's going to lead the pledge of allegiance and invocation this morning, or it's not this morning, tonight.
Good evening.
I missed their day.
It's good to see you all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Spirit of life, spirit of love, spirit of beloved community, we gather together to be of use and in service to our community. Be with this council, with the mayor, with the new members, Mr. Campbell and Ms. Reebie, and the continuing members in its work for the common good. Keep within each heart a love for the cause of the welfare for all life and a dedication to enriching the lives of all people. Keep before us all the principles of justice, equity, and compassion. Guide all present here in our labor to maintain and strengthen our public and civic lives in the name of all that is holy to each one we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to read the Brown Act notice of simultaneous meeting compensation. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District ordinance 2006-1. So the next thing on our agenda will be the approval of the agenda by our city manager.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Our city attorney, Joe Piper, will bring us out a closed session.
Thank you. The council met in closed session on items CS1 and CS2 on this evening's closed session agenda. No reportable actions were taken. Thank you, Mayor.
The next thing on our agenda are our presentations, and the first presentation will be, it's a letter of appreciation to our community services program manager Kathy Bronbecker. So Kathy will join me down here. Okay, so we have a letter of appreciation, and I'm going to read this to you. If you have a copy of it here. Kathy is retiring, and we're so sorry that she's going to be going, but she's going on to more exciting and better things, and she's not going to be gone. So I want to read this letter of appreciation for her. The Vista City Council would like to thank Kathy Bronbecker for her 32 years of committed artistic leadership, which has put the city of Vista and the Moonlight Amphitheater on the map as one of the region's major cultural resources. Kathy leaves the Moonlight Amphitheater and the Abo Playhouse with solid artistic standards, the result of her deep passion and commitment to quality theater. On August 8, 1989, Kathy was hired on a full-time basis as a senior recreation supervisor, and on January 11, 1997, her title was changed to Cultural Arts Program Manager to serve as the Moonlight's artistic director. Under Kathy's leadership, the Moonlight's artistic successes have been recognized by the San Diego Theatre Circle, Critics Circle, the Pate Awards for Theatrical Excellence, and the Raby Awards, among others. Milestones under Kathy's tenure include the completion of the Moonlight Amphitheater's state-of-the-art stagehouse in 2009, and the transformation of the Abo Playhouse from a movie house to a theater venue in 1995. Kathy was recognized as Management Employee of the Year in 1995, and was nominated for Manager of the Year Award in 2007 and 2008. Kathy was named as one of the 50 People to Watch by North County Magazine. She received the Craig Noel Award for Theatrical Trailblazer by the San Diego Theater Critics Circle. She received the Shyley Lifetime Achievement Award from the Pate Awards for Theatrical Excellence, and in 2010, the Vista Historical Society named her a member of the Vista Hall of Fame. Kathy has shown her commitment to the community by volunteering with organizations such as the Moonlight Cultural Foundation and the Moonlight Angels Auxiliary. Kathy is respected and admired by both coworkers and residents. She's given above and beyond what is expected to her job and to the community, and will be greatly missed but not forgotten. Kathy, the Vista City Council offers their sincere appreciation for your leadership, commends and thanks you for your invaluable service in the Recreation and Community Service Department, and wishes you well in the future, your in future endeavors, and your in retirement. So we're going to miss you, and thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
One more thing here, which is, we just give this to special people, and the engraving on the back says, Kathy Bronbecker, Artistic Director, City of Vista, August 1989 to December 2012. With sincere appreciation for a legacy of 32 years of leadership, dedication, and vision to the city of Vista, the city and staff will miss you tremendously, and we wish you well in your retirement and future endeavors. Thank you so much. And there's her plate for her.
How beautiful. How very special. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ritter, and esteemed city council members, city manager, and I am just so very honored this evening to accept this plate and this recognition. I think it always, when you're talking about a team that runs a theater, it always goes to the managing director, to the full-time people who run it day after day, to Bill Fortmiller, our supervisor, and to all the people, the actors, the designers, the directors, who have committed their talents to this theater over 32 years. We're so very proud, and I want to salute the city of Vista for their visionary actions in building the theater, not only physically but also in the community and supporting the theater these 32 years. It is exemplary in this nation, and I do hope that it continues. The theater continues to thrive, I don't hope, I know it will thrive, under the artistic directorship of Mr. Steve Claudini. We're so very lucky to have his leadership. So thank you for this recognition and to everyone in the community. Thank you.
Okay, the next presentation on our agenda are the Friends of Rancho Buena Vista Adobe Status Report, and Ruth Green will give us that.
Thank you for the opportunity to let you know what has happened and what is planned for the Adobe in the near future. For those of you new to the city council, I'll give you a brief history. The Rancho Buena Vista Adobe sits on land that was part of a land grant made to Felipe Sabria in 1845. The present structure was started in the mid-1850s. Additions to the structure were made over the next 50 years. The main reason that this Adobe building is so well-preserved is that it was lived in and therefore maintained continually until it was purchased by the city of Vista in 1989. A total of about 1,750 adults have toured the Adobe or the gallery in the past year. In addition, about 7,500 students have attended Adobe Day's activities. As a group, the Friends of the Adobe are determined to increase the visibility and community awareness of the birthplace of Vista, the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe. The number of hours volunteered each year equals about 1 and 1/2 full-time employee equivalents, with a dollar value at minimum wage and with no benefits of about $45,000. Monetary assets as of 12/9/2012 were $70,789.34, and yes, I went to the bank statements. Of that amount, $5,226.24 is in checking. The rest is in CDs. Gift shop sales remain our largest source of income. We recently added the ability to accept credit cards in the gift shop, and sales have increased as the result. Gallery sales have increased recently also, as the gallery exhibits have become better attended. Since art is often expensive, the potential for purchasing items using a credit card should improve gallery sales in the future. A recent event was our non-Labor Day event. Members were asked to contribute an amount equal to what they would expect to contribute for an event, either in time or in goods. We are very pleased to say that it produced about $1,150, with only about $50 in expenses. The Spirit of the Rancho Buena Adobe tours were given during late October. These tours provided the community awareness to a different segment of the community, and has resulted in about $1,000 being added to the Friends of the Adobe. The next event held was the Holiday Home Tour on December 2, which benefits the Vista Community Clinic. While there is little direct income for this event, it serves as a way to make the community aware of the Adobe. We had our usual bake sale, which does provide some income. We provide tours both on a drop-in basis and by appointment for groups of more than 10. Approximately 975 people have toured the Adobe on regular tours, and another 120 have toured as a part of large groups in the last year. The Adobe tour is now required by at least one history instructor at Miracosta College and another at Buena Vista High School. 227 people visited the Adobe during the Holiday Home Tour. In addition to providing tours of the Adobe, we give prospective wedding tours during the hours that we are open. Over the past year, 48 documented wedding groups were given tours. I strongly believe that more tours have been given but not recorded. I know I don't always remember to insist that they sign in. This decreases the necessity of the city of Vista to provide employees for wedding, bridal party tours. The art gallery has increased the visibility of the Adobe. We provide a venue for artists who are shown in the gallery to make sales. People come to see the work of favorite artists and then tour the Adobe. This year, about 650 people have signed the gallery guestbook. The Grants Committee solicits funding from both government and private entities for purchases and to provide scholarships for the Adobe Day's 3rd and 4th grade social studies visit. The Daughters of the American Revolution and the Children of the American Revolution have Rancho Buena Vista Adobe chapters. Longtime Vista residents are often not aware of the treasure that the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe is, and refer to it as the best-kept secret in the city of Vista. The Adobe Board has made increasing visibility and community awareness a high priority for the next year. We will present the Adobe to the community via audiovisual presentations. Service and community groups are being contacted and offered a presentation on the Adobe. A presentation made to the newcomers club has already resulted in their making a trip to see the Adobe. Our committees include the art gallery, acquisitions, grants, tours, finance, and the gift shop. We invite anyone present to contact us if you are interested in touring or volunteering. Keep in mind, there are many things of interest and involvement other than conducting tours. You can contact us via the Internet, by phone, or by mail. Thank you all for allowing the Friends of the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe to call your attention to the city treasure that is just across Alta Vista Drive from here.
Thank you so much for doing that. The next thing on our agenda is a presentation by San Diego North Economic Development Council, Prosperity on Purpose update by Rick Giddings and Stephanie Gunderson.
Mayor Ritter, city council members, staff, members of the public, thank you for allowing us to come this evening and give you an update on the Prosperity on Purpose. While Stephanie makes sure that our computer is up, and we apologize for not getting this to you in advance, but there's some intellectual property in this program that we've been asked not to share with anybody. So for those of you that may not know, San Diego North Economic Development Council is a coalition of private and public sectors working together to sustain and carefully grow the economic base of North San Diego County. Our goal is to attract and retain quality businesses to this region, and in turn create additional higher-paying jobs. I am the interim CEO, and I'm pleased and proud to introduce to you the new CEO, Carl Morgan. Carl comes to us from the city of Long Beach, where he was the redevelopment project officer and economic development officer for downtown Long Beach. So Carl is taking the reins as of yesterday, and I will be riding into a retirement on December 31. I think you have a copy of the presentation in front of you, so let me just walk through it a little bit. Prosperity on Purpose is a project that was a coalition between, initially, a coalition between Supervisor Horn's office and San Diego North EDC. And the purpose, of course, was to work on a regional basis with District 5 boundaries plus Escondido. As you know, District, or city of Escondido is not in District 5. And it was generated as a result of both Supervisor Horn's unhappiness about the fact that out of $33 million worth of grants that came to San Diego County, North County got a whopping $133,000. And so part of that process was to work with the five cities that abut Highway 78, and to begin working on a more regional basis. The program consists really of two programs. The first is a comprehensive economic development strategy that we were fortunate to finish and receive EDA approval, so that on a regional basis, we can now apply for grants from the Department of Commerce and other federal agencies. That's the first time in San Diego County's history that we have a regional SEDs. And that work that was done as a part of the regional SEDs was very interesting because it gave us a snapshot, a picture in time, of what North San Diego County is and what it isn't, particularly as it relates to economic and industry clusters in North San Diego County. The clusters are an interesting mixture of different types of firms, and the two significant clusters are specialized manufacturing and then tourism and specialized agriculture. And as we all know, the third sort of leg of that issue is the industry cluster related to defense spending. In San Diego County, one of every four jobs is related in some way to defense spending. So in looking at the comprehensive economic development strategy, what we discovered is that there's a number of current industry clusters that are 10 and 15 times the national average of anywhere else. For instance, sports and recreational manufacturing is 22 times the national average in North San Diego County. Electronic connecting materials is about 11 times the national average. And so it really gives us a roadmap as to undertake and review what is available today and how we can expand those current industry clusters without necessarily having to go out and recruit new industries to come into North San Diego County. The second aspect of the Prosperity on Purpose is a visioning process where we went to an outside contractor, Cal Thorpe and Associates from Berkeley, California. We worked very closely with your city staffs to get all of your updated general plans, and we used a three-program process, one called Rapid Fire, which is the intellectual property of Cal Thorpe and Associates, another one called Urban Footprint, and then we stitched all of the general plans of that particular boundaries together on a Google Earth 3D map. And so what we've been able to do is to put together a plan for this region that allows us to start at 30,000-foot level and come down to the street level and reflect all of the general plans for every parcel in this district. As far as we are concerned, it's the first time that that has occurred. We're continuing to work with Cal Thorpe, we're continuing to work with our public partners, and I think the next phase really is being driven by the five mayors along the 78 corridor. They're very interested, I believe, in working on a visioning process, to work on what I'll call a branding of this region of North San Diego County with a marketing plan that will allow us for the first time also to market North San Diego County versus just the city of Carlsbad, just the city of Vista, but actually market and brand North San Diego County as an independent, separate region. And I'm suspecting this is not going to come up in a timely fashion, and since your very capable economic development manager told me I had 10 minutes, we will close with that, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have now or in the future. Ah, here we are, at long last. Let's go right to the mapping process if we can. Okay, that's not coming up on this. I'm sorry. Rapid Fire, right? But this, we have the map here, and it's not coming up, so. It's not coming. All right. Well, rather than take your time. Ah, there we go. Here's the mapping process. You can see the boundaries of the region that was covered in the comprehensive economic development strategy. And then on the left, you can see we can tap into all sorts of different things. Why don't you put the transportation on there? Okay, and there's a transportation, including the Sprinter line, and let's go to tribal lands. You can see the tribal lands to the east, and we now understand why they have a transportation problem. There is no transportation to speak of that goes to the tribal lands. Let's go to the military reservations, if you can find it. Okay, there are the military reservations, Camp Pendleton, Miramar, North Island, down further south. And then the real purpose of this was to blend in all of the general plans. Let's go to mixed, mid-rise, mixed-use. And so what we've done is we've color-coded all of the various general plan designations within this area, and you can see this particular purple is defined as mixed-use. And we're going to sort of drill down into the San Marcos Creek specific plan, only because I'm more familiar with that than any other mixed-use project. And for those of you that aren't familiar with it, it's along the San Marcos Creek, just south of San Marcos Boulevard, between San Marcos Boulevard and Discovery. You can see that it's a mixed-use by the purple color. You can come down on the street level, and if you're someone that's looking for a mid-rise mixed-use, 3 to 7 stories, you can come down and say, okay, how many acres are developed, undeveloped? What's the current look of that area? And you can actually investigate the land uses that are available without having to go to each city hall, which is one of the goals, is to allow us to participate with each of the cities and put their general plan on this so that it's much more user-friendly, ultimately, for people who want to relocate to North County, people who want to expand to North County, but they want to know what the general plan land uses are in various areas. So, yeah, that's just a very short version of this. This mapping process has a lot of capabilities we haven't even explored yet, but we wanted to give you a little quick update on where we are, and we'll be glad to answer any questions, and we appreciate your time.
Do I have any questions from the council? Anybody? I guess no questions. You answered all of our questions. But it's very exciting, and I've seen it run, you know, closer, and it's a very exciting program, so.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations on that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar, and we have items C5, C10, and C11 have been pulled by the general public. Are there any other items that the council would like to have pulled? C5, C10, and C11 have been pulled by the general public. If there's no other items, then I would take a motion for approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
Sorry. Oh, there we go. I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
Do you have a motion and a second? Please cast your votes. Did everybody push their thing? Do you want us to try it again? Okay, everyone try it again. Hmm.
On 3.
It's okay, it passes unanimously, even though it doesn't show on the screen. So then the next thing we'll do is we're going to go to item C5, which is a janitorial services agreement, and that was pulled by one of our speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first?
Sure.
Okay, the speaker is Chuck Rabel.
Good evening, folks. Congratulations, you new faces up there. And I am Chuck Rabel. I live here locally. I've been involved far too long, but I'm still involved. Looking at the report... Looking at the report, the statement of the subject, page one, talks about the Civic Center only and the nine city parks totaling $92,000. On the second page, we talk about $35,000 more thousand for the senior center and the recreation center and so forth. I'm at a loss as to figure out what it is, so if you go to page five, we looked at contractor duties, which is in accordance with Part II of the general specs portion of the contract. Well, there are no, there is no Part II in this document that I could find. I'm missing it. Next on the list is the fact that on page two, we've got two bids. We solicited 30 Vista-based companies, and we got two bids, and the lowest bid is half of the high bid. Just seems crazy to me, coming out of business, that that's the best we could do. Finally, we've done this before on other contracts where the staff was overturned, like in the case of the paving outfit out of Escondido that was declared non-responsive, but eventually we got the job. I would suggest that you consider going forward to establish a central purchasing and contract office so that the RFPs, when they do go out, are consistent, and that we have somebody in charge other than the department head to see to it that it makes business sense. With that, I'll rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Are there any questions from any council members? No. Then I would entertain a motion for approval if there's no questions.
I move to approve item C5, as recommended.
I'll second. Okay. So please cast your votes. Okay, so, okay, so, anyone, everyone in favor, please raise your hands. How's that? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. No one is opposed. The next item on our agenda that was pulled was item C11.
Yeah.
No, C10. Application for a cabaret license for the California Fruit Wine Company located at 1040 La Mirada Court. So I'll have the staff give us a presentation first, and then we can...
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager, and with me tonight is Cheryl Mast, our management analyst, and she'll be giving the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The owners of California Fruit Wine Company located at 1040 La Mirada Court have applied for a Class D cabaret license, allowing single or double entertainment acts with no dancing by patrons. California Fruit Wine is located in the business park area of the city. With the City Council's amendment to the business park-specific plan in August, staff is able to consider cabaret requests within this location of the city. Consistent with staff's recommendation for other alcohol-related businesses in the business park, staff is recommending that the City Council approve a Class D cabaret license, allowing non-amplified, non-amplified live entertainment on Fridays between 3:00 and 10:00 p.m. and weekends from noon to 10:00 p.m. with no dancing by patrons. The owners have agreed to all city-requested conditions, with the exception of non-amplified music. The owners would like to allow specific amplified musical entertainment, such as jazz guitar, jazz vocalist, keyboard, and certain string instruments, such as an upright bass or cello. This concludes staff's presentation. Ms. Zimmerman and I are available to answer questions.
Okay, we have several speakers. We have four speakers. Do you want to hear the speakers next? Okay, then we'll start with Tom Vogel.
Hi, I want to speak in favor of the cabaret license, but I'd also like to speak in favor of the amplified music, which they would like to have at their establishment. I completely understand. I've gone through with Cheryl the statistics that the Sheriff Department has and the ABC has on amplified music. Anytime you allow amplified music or dancing, there's a step up in problems in bars. But I think the problem is those statistics aren't specific enough. If you were to go in any neighborhood in Vista on a regular street, you would know what the values of the homes are, you would know where there's crime in that area, you would have so many statistics to evaluate in the decisions you want to make for buying that it's all available to you, because there's a lot of money in home development, and we all put our stats in that direction. But we don't have any statistics in the area of breweries versus regular bars or the California Fruit and Wine Company versus regular bars. So there is no way for us to judge at one time what music would do, given those statistics. They're just not available. So I think tonight you have a great opportunity to do a small step for this industry. The breweries have all accepted the fact that they won't be getting amplified music. I think maybe in a year from now, you look back at that and say, well, maybe we should look into that. Maybe that's something we can do. But the California Fruit and Wine Company are on a different level. They are not considered one of the breweries. So what of an opportunity do we have here to allow them to have amplified music and just see how that works in the general area? If you open it to the breweries right away, you have six breweries ready to have amplified music, you're going to be hit a little bit bigger than you might want to be because everybody's going to be allowed to do it. You do it for one, you have to do it for the other. But these guys fall under a different category. So if you let them have amplified music, right away, you're going to see what that does in a business park. Right away, you're going to see the type of clientele that they have, and you're going to have police statistics based on one specific area, which would be breweries and California fruit wines. So I own one of the breweries in the area, and if you were to make a decision tonight and approve the California fruit wine, what I would like to put forward is, when the breweries come up to get amplified music, when all six of them in the business park come together for amplified music, you're going to be worried about how many are coming to term at that time, right? Oh, my God, now we have six of them. I would delay my own license long enough. If you were to allow the California fruit license to come out now, I would delay my license long enough. So when you do allow it for the breweries, and I think that you will, because when we get emails now from people saying, hey, I hear you have a cabaret, can we play at your place? We're like, well, we don't allow amplified music. Like, oh, forget it. I mean, it just doesn't work for them. But instead of, in getting baby steps, which is what everybody wants, and the slow growth for the breweries and seeing what happens, allow these guys to come up and have that license. I'll delay mine in that specific area for a period of time when that comes up, and then I'll allow the breweries to come on more slowly. You won't have six of them jumping out to get the cabaret license. So one of them, I'll delay mine if we can start those statistics now.
You need to wrap up, please.
I'm wrapping up. That's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question.
Sure.
The delay, how long, you said a period of time of the delay, what time length?
I would take whatever you guys would like me. If you want me to delay six months or a year, I'm happy to do so. But I think the statistics, the data needs to start now, and this would be a good opportunity.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nick, is it? How do I pronounce your last name?
The J is useless.
Oh, the J silent?
Yes.
Oh, Lubik, okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nick Lubik, representing the Vista Chamber of Commerce. At this time, we are aware of the guidelines for California fruit wine needs, and at this time, the chamber and the executive, Chamber Executive Council encourages the council to postpone the decision to allow for more time for California fruit wine. The Vista Brewers Guild to get more information, more statistics, and discuss reasonable cabaret guidelines for them and for the city. That's it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian, oh, no, hi, hi. Did I murder your last name, too?
So you've seen me before. I'm Brian, one of the owners of California Fruit Wine. Thanks for letting me speak today. Appreciate your time. You know, one of the things that I would like to emphasize, and I hope I emphasize it if you got my email yesterday, was, you know, we're in agreement. We think that the city should limit the cabaret license. The problem is, the cabaret license as it now stands, and a lot of the breweries will tell you who've been using it for the last couple of months, it's not very useful, in fact, useful to the point of being useless, or not very useful to the point of being useless. I kind of anticipated that. That's why I chose to be considered separate. Yes, we're a winery, but really, I knew that to have a cabaret license at all, you need to have some form of amplified music to make it useful. So my question, and what I would like the conversation to take place, is, is there a better way that we can limit the cabaret license to make it still useful for us and protect against the concerns that the city, the Sheriff Department, and the ABC has? And to that end, I feel like we haven't really had that conversation. We haven't been invited into that conversation despite volunteering to be in that conversation. So whether that conversation takes place between now and the next council meeting or whether, you know, this is something we can talk about right now is up to you guys. My proposition to limit the cabaret license would be, instead of throwing out all amplified music, it would be to limit the type and function of the amplified music and to what I qualify or classify as background music. So you've gone into coffee shops, gone into maybe jazz clubs or something where it's just background music. It's just ambiance setting. People aren't turning their attention. It's not a dance club. People aren't getting trashed and having fights in the parking lot. We close at 10:00 p.m. at night. So for us to be pulled in in that same statistic, I think, is a little bit disingenuous, and I think if you really look at the industry, we're responsible business owners. We want to be active members of the community. We're here today. We're interfacing with the city on multiple occasions. You know, trust us. We love the opportunity to actually create some meaningful statistics for you guys.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Cliff Kaiser.
Evening, Mayor, council, new council. Good to see you all. Cliff Kaiser, and I'm representing just myself here, but just a quick comment, because I got a call from the Aura Indoor Skate Park today, just coincidentally, and they happen to be right in that same court with California fruit wine. So I just raised a red flag real quick. Here we got a bunch of young kids going to skate park right next to a fruit wine place that's tasting wine and having music and having adults intermingle with kids, perhaps. Just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Oh, okay, thank you. Chuck Rabel's our next speaker.
Hello again, Chuck Rabel. I was a longtime part of the business park, though not in this specific area. It seems to me that these folks are geographically handicapped because of the location, as opposed to Smitty's or John's Bar and Grill and a whole lot of other people that do have acoustic music. If you need to bring it back and do some homework, that's fine. There are no neighbors in the neighborhood to speak of, and it just seems to me the answer is to say yes on the cabaret license and yes to acoustics. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Grace Judson.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. I don't know the details of statistics or how all of that planning works, but what I have seen is how these young men have been doing business. And I am a private consultant myself, doing marketing consulting for small businesses, and they have impressed me with the ways that they are trying to develop community among their customers. And this, I think, is simply another aspect of how that community development is going to work for them. Brian said it today, that that's really what they're really trying to do, is create a sense of, I don't want to say family, that's a little hokey, but a sense of a group of people who are coming together to enjoy their product, to enjoy each other in a social situation. And I do not see this being the type of thing that would ever get out of hand, you know, I mean, with the amplified music. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our speakers. So council member Coles.
Yep. Thank you. I've gotten the emails and read them, and I appreciate that. And I think we've all been very impressed by the professional growth of the industry here, the brewer, the microbrewers, and then your new fruit wine place. And I think you've done a good job of outlining some rationale for background music that takes the starkness away from the setting when people are in your locations. And I know that alcohol manufacture, distribution, sale, and consumption is highly regulated in California, and we're subject to a lot of those regulations, and the process that we go through is sometimes kind of binding. But to the extent that we can make some allowance for this, I'm open to that. I think, you know, I would hate to see a flood of B2s, you know, next week if we were to consider, and I think I would be willing to have some staff dialogue with your planning of, you know, what kind of limitations, sound levels, because those are all part of that, that background music. And the fear would be that this would generate into, you know, rock concerts on the weekends, and I don't think that's what we want to see. But I'm open to listening to some options that might allow for that ambient background. So that's kind of my feeling from listening to you tonight and from reading the background.
Council member Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm definitely in support of the breweries and what's being asked, but I think we probably need to look into this a little bit further in how we would accomplish this and have happy people, you know, both at the fruit wine company and the brewers. My biggest concern would be competition with our downtown area. So that would be something I would like to see how we would handle that and limit, I guess, what goes on in our business park. And then the other question I have is, do we really want to make our business park a, I guess, focal point for entertainment? So again, I don't want to eliminate it, but as an option, you know, the amplified music, but at the same time, I think there needs to be a definite difference of our downtown and what goes on in our business park. So I would propose that we push this off until we can have more information and make a better decision on this. I mean, if this is something they feel is going to make their business better, I want to work with them and help them in that area. But again, at the same time, I do want to protect some of our interests that we're trying to build in our downtown area as well. Thank you.
Okay, and I would just say that I'm very proud of the business. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I'm just very impressed with it. But I also worry about our business parks. I don't want it to become a place with bar, you know, a bar atmosphere out there. But I also don't like boxes and, you know, put people, you know, like, this is the rule, and it's always the rule when we have new businesses coming out that have, you know, different needs. So I think we need more history to make sure, because I don't want to, you know, how many sheriff calls there might be out there. I think we need just a little more history in our business park. So I'd like to put it off. I'm not saying no forever. You know, I'd say come back to us after a while, maybe, but I just think for right now, I just would rather wait and have a little bit of history out there. So. Council member Coles, yes?
By putting it off, are we talking about separating the cabaret license from the amplified music, or is it a package deal? Can we, I mean...
I don't know. Was ABC, would they allow us to separate, to make a separation?
Well, I think what council member Coles is stating is, would you like to have the ABC, or the cabaret license without... ABC, or the cabaret license without the amplification and then study the issue for determining whether you want to allow amplification?
Yeah, I, I'd hate to hold them up on-
Oh, yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
-on, on moving ahead with the cabaret license. And, and, and I'm, I'm prone to, uh, listen to, um, some options on the, the ambient music, uh, proposal.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, my understanding is that they wanted to wait until they got the amplified music.
Okay.
Wait, come up, you have to come up here.
Because he said it was useless. So, I mean, I mean, if it really is, then why go through it, I guess?
It's not helpful to us without the amplification.
It isn't helpful to you?
No, it's not. It doesn't, it's too loud. Amplification makes something louder so that you can hear it. That's why you have stereo with speakers that amplifies it. Um, it's just, the musicians get angry. You can talk to any of the breweries. Um, I would rather you table the conversation than to vote on it now in support of the acoustic. I'd rather, uh, be tabled to a, a future, uh, meeting and let's get more research. And I don't mean research, more research as in, uh, you know, let's give them the acoustic and see what kind of statistic we have. Like I said, that's going to be meaningless because even the breweries, you can talk with them, you can pull them up one at a time. They'll tell you it's, it's, they're not, they're going to discontinue using it. So, I mean, this is the, this is why we would have liked to have been invited into the conversation before we got to this point, and now we're at this point trying to put a bandaid on it. But.
Mayor, if I could add some comments there. Um, the City of Vista staff has been very involved with the Brewers Guild, which California Fruit and Wine has been a part of. And I think in Brian's email to all of you, he stated that, that the city council and the city's been supportive. Um, so I think we have involved individuals in this process. One of the things that, um, we haven't had, we haven't had issues in the business park. We haven't had issues of crime. Um, so we don't have a lot of statistics, as Mr. Vogel stated. Um, so the council in the past, as some of you may remember, we were very restrictive in terms of, uh, being supportive of ABC licenses and even allowing cabaret. And in the last few years, this has changed, and it's changed drastically compared to where the council was. So we've been cautious in our approach, uh, understanding that we want to support the businesses. We've supported the ABC licenses. We've supported the cabaret licenses, but we're being cautious on the amplified music side because we don't want to start generating calls to the business park. And as I think was stated up on the dais, you know, we want some statistics from allowing at least the cabaret without the amplification and to see in a year, two years, what that might do, then to be able to relook at whether amplification's going to be detrimental or a concern from a public safety perspective. So, uh, and some there, in, in terms of researching the issue, I'm not sure what we would be researching from now to a month from now, other than to the breweries that have cabaret licenses. Uh, they got them in, or they got approval in October. And so we'd like to look at that over a period of time to make sure there, there aren't any calls for, increased calls for service to the business park.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Yes.
And then, well, by Councilmember Coles.
Well, I think, uh, the research I'm looking at doing is, or having staff hopefully do, is, uh, working with the brewers and, and, uh, the wineries and talking to them and finding out what would work, what wouldn't work. Like, we're finding out tonight that potentially the, the cabaret license that is allowed is, is not working. I mean, you know, but what if we allowed amplified music? Would we allow it till nine o'clock? Is that something that's acceptable? You know, um, would it be something that we wouldn't allow during the week, but maybe on the weekend? I mean, talking to them and finding out what's going to work for them and what's going to work for the city as well. I mean, something that would be acceptable to staff, acceptable to sheriffs, the ABC, everybody involved.
And, and in the past, you know, we didn't allow cabaret licenses to exist in the same fashion that we do now. And so I would say that, that the cabaret process is kind of the start. It's the research into this, and the amplification is secondary, you know, once we do have some, some statistics. And, uh, we have worked with the, the Brewers Guild, um, over the course of many, many months to talk about the ABC issues and to talk about the cabaret issues. And I believe in October, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that there wasn't any opposition to the fact of allowing the cabaret with, uh, no amplification. Now, that's not to say there were some, uh, breweries that did, uh, submit applications for amplified music, but I think they agreed as a whole to get in the door and to see how it works and to make sure there aren't any issues or problems. The one other thing I'd like to point out is that with amplification, there's, there's discussion or talk about the limitations on amplification, whether it's, uh, the decibel level or the number of speakers. And for our city, we don't have a huge enforcement staff. And so, you know, if you're going to allow amplification, it's got to be amplified. And if, and if it's not, it's, well, I guess what I'm saying is there's no, there's either amplification or there's no amplification. Uh, and ABC doesn't like to enforce things. The city doesn't like to enforce things where one night it's one way and the next night it might be different. So on Fridays, they might be allowed to do this, and then on Saturdays, uh, they're not allowed to do it. That doesn't go over well with the ABC, and it's difficult from an enforcement perspective to, to be able to, um, regulate.
Well, and, and one thing is I know they're asking here for, their amplified music is like jazz guitar, jazz vocalist, keyboard, amplified string. Not, I think it's not like a rock and roll band, you know? It's like a different type of amplification, but, um, Councilmember Coles, yeah, go ahead.
Um, this industry has kind of, um, developed a little steam in the last, uh, six months to a year. And a year ago, I don't think this was on our plate at all to consider what the impact and outcome of, of these, uh, little upstart, uh, enterprises might have an impact. And, and I don't want to get so hidebound in where, where I might have been a year ago, not to be able to, uh, move with the industry in a, in a good way. I mean, um, the, um, I, I don't want to wait a year or two years to, to get a history of, of what might be happening or what, uh, what is evolving in this regard. And, um, I could see, um, using our current, uh, policy, our, our current ordinances for a while, but I don't want to go for a year or two before we maybe consider opening the door to this, uh, uh, because it does sound like, uh, a pretty comfortable, uh, easy listening kind of, uh, proposal that, that's being made. So, um, I'm willing to move ahead with some consideration at some level.
Councilmember Campbell.
A question for staff on this. Would it be possible to look at moving forward with the amplification now on a conditional period of time? For instance, looking forward, approving the cabaret license with amplification for a six-month period of time and then bring it back to council to reevaluate if there is any issue within that time period?
Well, the cabaret license runs for a one-year period of time, and then they renew. And, um, so I would say that if, if the council's inclined to grant the cab, the, sorry, the, the amplified portion of the cabaret, that, um, it would go with the license, which would be one year.
Would it go-
Can I clarify one thing? Um, the licenses come up every year in June, so even though he's applying now, this one will come up a renewal in June, and then it'll be on a 12-month schedule after that.
Is this running until then? Excuse me, this would be a six-month approval to, to give it a trial period? Is that?
That's correct. It's prorated.
And is, is what we do for the California Wine Company, is what we do for one person, we do for all? Is it that, is it, or do it-
No, that's the decision of the city council. I, I would say that, you know, what we've tried to be is very cautious in our approach, working with law enforcement and code enforcement, um, and step into this, uh, in a gentle manner so that we allow the cabarets, but holding back on amplification until we know there's not an issue. Um, but it's, it's up to the council and each individual applicant. I would assume, though, that if this was granted, there would be others that would obviously approach the city for the amplification.
And could you, could we say, um, the type of amplification? Could we, could we say, you know, limit it to that? Or it, it would have to also be rock and roll bands that would be very loud and?
I think, well, once we allow for, whether it's cabaret or amplification, it's up to them. They're, they're limited to one or two-person acts in this instance. Um, some of the breweries are limited to three-person acts. And if it's amplified, um, it's amplified whether they choose to have a rock guitarist or a strolling guitarist with an acoustic guitar. It's up to the venue. And like I said, you know, from a staff perspective, it's very difficult because we don't have, uh, a great number of code enforcement staff to be able to patrol and determine whether, you know, you wanted to limit to a rock band or a jazz guitarist. It, we just don't have the staff to enforce that kind of thing.
How you define, how do you define all the different musics?
Yeah, how do you define the different music? Yeah, that's true, too.
If it's acid.
Yeah, so, so, anybody down there? Any motions or anything?
I think we're, we're working toward maybe perhaps a compromise here, maybe, I don't know. But, um, the, the brewery spokesperson that talked to us said they, they would like to see this as an experimental thing and hold off, uh, uh, that's only one person that said that. But I, I think I would, uh, be inclined to, to, uh, be supportive of, of the California fruit wine if I felt that we weren't going to get a deluge, um, of new applications between now and the, uh, and, and the June renewal process.
Reject them.
So, yeah, I think somebody wants to-
Did you submit a, a-
I did, but I have a, maybe a partial solution for you.
Okay, stand up and then you have to state your name and-
My name's Lane Rickard, and I'm speaking on another item, but I do this for a living. And maybe the caveat that you add to this is that the company that is applying for this application is required to purchase the necessary equipment to monitor a decibel threshold level that they actually, it tracks it. And when they come back in six months, they have to supply that to the city and say, "We've been doing our job. We've been monitoring this, and it's a product that you have them, if they want the license, provide the equipment to show proof that they are monitoring the levels. That's an acceptable level to all of you." And then that way, you don't have to worry about code enforcement. You don't have to worry about getting out of hand. And the caveat is, if they have three violations on it, then they, you know, the ABC walks in and it's going nuts. You pull the license and you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Is that, is that expensive equipment?
It's somewhere you buy it from, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't, shouldn't be that, that bad because what you're doing is adding monitoring, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have to come up here and speak.
Because what you're doing is you're adding a monitoring system that controls the threshold. So no matter how loud an individual guitarist, as you say, plays, it's only going to go so loud. And, and it monitors the overall level, whether it's one speaker, five speakers. So if you determine that at 40 feet outside the building, you only want to see, you know, 35 decibels of noise with the doors closed, that's what the equipment is set at. And with what this gentleman is, is, uh, asking for, that should be more than enough. And I know you have the, the data to create those thresholds that you're just, because what you're doing is you're putting the onus on him to show that everything he's telling you he's going to do, you, you request to have him provide the equipment if he wants the license, and then he has to prove, provide the data when his license comes up to show he's doing what he's supposed to be doing.
Interesting.
Seems complicated, doesn't it?
That doesn't sound too complicated.
It doesn't sound complicated? It doesn't to me.
In this era of technology?
Well, okay, so I, I, I'm here, I have Councilmember Coles, Aguilera, and Councilmember, do you still have anything to say anymore? And then I have, how about you, John? Did you have anything else you want to add? Second, I'm checking you off my list here.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, Councilmember Rigby.
I just wanted to follow up on the, the other question. You said the cost of that equipment depended. Do you have a ballpark figure? And then my follow-up question would be to the gentleman in question, would you be willing to put that money out for that equipment? So, if you have a ballpark figure, I'd like to hear.
Is it speakers? Is it speakers?
No, it's what it is, is you're putting a compressor in line that has a memory to it that will track the nightly or the two days a week music. And, you know, depending on the size of hard drive you have to put in it, you're basically putting a computer on the, on the back end of all of his equipment. So he, he has to purchase all the equipment regardless. Now's what you're doing is, it's, it's like renting a rider truck. It's only going to go 60 miles an hour going down the freeway, no matter how hard you push on that gas pedal, downhill or uphill. So you're putting a, a limiter on the final output at stage of all of his instruments going into it. You know, a simple one is $380, but it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, record the data. So he's going to have to spend a few thousand dollars, but if his license, if it means that much to him and, and he sees the, the big picture and the value in this, even if he spent $5,000, it is money well worth spent for him to continue to operate his business. Do everything you all are requesting of him, and he comes back to the city and shows proof. And like I said, if the ABC or the sheriff goes out there more than a couple of times, you just have to ask for that data, look at it and say, "I'm sorry, your license is pulled because we, we gave you some parameters to operate. It didn't work out."
I, I don't know if the issue is as much the decibel level and the parameters as it is the safety of not having sheriffs and, and, and that kind of a thing. I, I don't know. Somebody help me over here. Amanda, do you have anything else that you wanted to say?
I was just giving you a solution.
No, yeah, okay. No, okay, no, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. My thought on this is that, once we do allow for amplification for any one entity, it's, we're going to be deluged, I think, um, maybe over a longer period of time, but at, at some point, we're going to have a lot more requests for the same thing to come in. And I think what we're seeing here is that we need more, we need to discuss it more. We need to put together a plan of procedures and guidelines for the various types of businesses that would be asking for this. And I don't think we're at that point right now. So I, I know that we, we were talking separating cabaret and amplification for tonight's purposes, but you had said that that wouldn't work for you. So if we went ahead with a cabaret license and then revisited and did some more, uh, work on putting together a plan for amplification, um, you wouldn't want the cabaret. You, you just want it all in one package.
I guess I'd like the conversation to take place. I'd rather not vote on it one way or the other. I'd rather table it and be invited into that discussion. It's true what Patrick says, that we were in those Brewer Guild's meeting, Brewer Guild meetings, but those weren't conversations. You know, those were essentially telling us, informing us what the sheriffs, ABC, and city discussed. So we would like input into that conversation, work with the city to come up with things that address the city's concerns while still, again, enabling us to get use out of the cabaret license.
Thank you. Well, Madam Mayor, with that, I would, I would propose that we table this until we can put together a, a package that's more complimentary to all the businesses in question.
So, okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. So are we raising our hands again? You think so? Okay, everyone in favor of that? Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion is tabled, and that motion passes. Okay. Moving on to our next item, which is C-11, Commercial Vehicle Parking Prohibition on Various Streets. So we're going to have a, a report from-
Sam Hassan.
Sam Hassan, or John?
Yes, good evening. Good evening. Uh, we received complaints from, uh, two businesses in the, uh, business park area regarding large trucks parking on, um, uh, two streets, actually, that, uh, concern began on Dogwood Way and Birch Street. So I just wanted to, uh, kind of give a background on the streets themselves first. There's, uh, this specific area has five streets, which are Dogwood Way, Birch Street, Grand Avenue, Coral Street, and Cades Way. And all these, uh, streets are classified as local streets with a 25 mile per hour prima facia speed limit. Uh, they are 40 feet in width, and they have industrial and office land uses. So in response to the complaints, uh, we have gone out and evaluated the issue that was, uh, brought to us about the large, uh, trucks parking. And, um, indeed, we found, uh, a multiple number of semi-trailers parking on Dogwood Way and on Birch Street. And, uh, what we've also found is that since, uh, the streets are only 40 feet in width, that these trucks narrow down the travel way and make it difficult for two cars to pass each other. They also impact the side distance at the driveways, uh, to the various businesses on these streets. Uh, also, the problem is, seems to be, uh, long-term. It's not just, um, an hour or two. A lot of these trucks are there for, um, a whole day, sometimes overnight. They leave their coolers running, which are, um, noisy. Uh, we've also, uh, seen them leaving unattached trailers, uh, left there for days, actually. So the result, uh, from our evaluation, we found is, uh, the, uh, first, that the parking of these semi-trailers, uh, caused a potential for traffic collisions. They also caused noise in the area as well as- They also cause noise in the area, as well as just decrease the overall quality of the area because of the aesthetics and the noise. So just some pictures of what we saw out there. This is Dogwood Way, and you can see a couple of semis there. And actually, this is a close-up, you see an unattached trailer there, as well as another semi-trailer. This is Birch Street, you see trucks on both sides of the street. Now, this is the three other streets that I mentioned that don't have any trucks on them at this point. This is Grand Avenue, this is Coral Street, this is Cades Way. So based on our evaluation, we made a recommendation to prohibit the parking of commercial vehicles with a manufacturer gross vehicle weight, weight in ten thousand pounds or more on this, all five of the streets, Dogwood Way, Birch Street, Grand Avenue, Coral Street, and Cades Way. We took the recommendation to the Traffic Commission on October 3rd, 2012, and there was a lot of discussion and speakers at that meeting, and the Traffic Commission voted to continue the item and asked staff to further evaluate the following issues. First item was to, for staff to consider raising the proposed ten thousand pound manufacturer gross vehicle weight rating, and we've considered that, and we felt that we wanted to leave the weight limit at ten thousand pounds because the main objective really, prohibiting the parking of the trucks, is the height and the width. The height obviously limits side distance, the width limits the width of the road, and, you know, hence the potential for collisions. So vehicles at the ten thousand pounds limit or more pretty much have the same height and width, they may be smaller, shorter, but really, the height and width is the same. So our recommendation was to leave the weight limit at the ten thousand pounds. The second item was to consider implementing two-hour time limit parking instead of just prohibiting parking altogether for the big trucks. And obviously, time limit parking is more difficult to enforce than just a parking prohibition because it requires two visits from a law enforcement or a code enforcement department, and obviously, the resources are limited when it comes to enforcement. So we did not recommend to change the proposal to time limit parking. Third item was to explore parking and delivery scheduling alternatives for the parked semi-trailers. So the parked semi-trailers that we found out there tailored to a specific business, and obviously, the business is a private business, so we did not feel that the city would play a role in scheduling their deliveries or finding parking alternatives in private lots for these trucks that serve a private business. So the item was presented again at the November 7th, 2012 Traffic Commission meeting, and at that time, there was more discussion and speakers, and the Traffic Commission voted in favor of a staff recommendation, which is, just to repeat, it was the same original recommendations to prohibit the parking of the commercial vehicles with a ten thousand pound weight limit on the five streets in that area. And one thing I didn't mention is that why we added the three other streets, we found the issue originally on Dogwood Way and on Birch. We felt that it would be just very easy if we prohibited the parking on Dogwood Way and Birch, that the trucks would just move to the nearby streets, which are Grand, Coral, and Caves. This is a map of the area that shows the streets highlighted in red, those are the streets in question. They're kind of bounded by Sycamore Avenue and La Marada Drive. That's our presentation.
Oh, is that the end of your report?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the map. Okay, I have speakers, do you want to have speakers?
Sure.
Please, okay. First speaker is Lane, is it Ricard?
Can I go last? Can I be the last speaker?
Can you be the last speaker?
Please.
Okay.
You're the best.
The next one would be Jose Valencia.
As stated, my name is Jose Valencia. I'm the Director of Human Resources for Jensen Meat Company, and once again, I'm not here to represent myself, I'm here to represent over three hundred families that are employed at my company, which we are, some of those trucks belongs to us. One of the issues that have been arise or arose in this situation is that, you know, we are moving from the city of Vista in the next six months. One of the things that had happened since then is that there's a couple companies that want to lease the building where we currently have, and one of the issues that is going to happen is we're going to have to disclose to them that they cannot park their trucks on the street, being that it's an industrial area and being that for right now, it's the only city in San Diego that I know that has this type, this type of prohibition of trucks parking on the streets in an industrial area. It's interesting that you'll be thinking about allowing a bar to be in an industrial area, but our trucks cannot be parked. And again, we're supporting over three hundred families, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alvin Vega.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this. I'm not employed by this company, I'm not an attorney. They didn't ask me to be here. I volunteer this because I was reading a newspaper article about the trucks being parked on the business park, and my concern is, just like Jose said, there's three hundred employees working for this company. A lot of these employees live here in Vista. Please don't let them move, because what's going to happen is, a lot of them are going to lose their jobs, a lot of them might be first-time home buyers, some of them won't be able to commute all the way down, maybe to San Pedro.
That, you know, that isn't our choice.
I understand that.
That's their choice, and they're already moving, they already have, committed to that, so that...
I understand that, but what I would like is, if you could just let them park on the longer streets, the small ones, I understand that, don't let them park the trucks on the smaller streets, but on the longer ones, I drove by there, there's enough room there for two cars to go through. So what I would do is recommend that you put certain restrictions, let them park the trucks on the street, there's no evidence of oil leaking. There's no leaking oils on the street, there haven't been no repairs on the street, there hasn't been any trucks sighted by the Sheriff's Department, there hasn't been any truck crashes with cars, there hasn't been any trash from the vehicles, from the trucks onto the street. And about a month and a half ago, they had members of the city staff going to all the businesses about problems in the business park. They never went to Jensen Meat Company to discuss anything, they never mentioned that. The refrigerator trucks, the forty DPAs is not, they're not really noisy. Eighty DPAs is considered dangerous, those trucks, the refrigerator trucks are not noisy as the staff mentioned.
I need you to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Boyd.
I'm from Lamar Aquarium and Pet Supplies, we're on Dogwood Way, the first two buildings off of La Marada. Just to give you a quick idea, our company was started in nineteen seventy-five in Vista over on Olive Avenue, little tiny building, and as we grew, we took over more buildings there, as we grew, we took over more buildings. And we were, our biggest building of the two was the eighth building built in that whole business park. So when this business park started in Vista, we were here and part of it and supporting it, and we've been in those locations since nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen eighty-nine. We've kind of gone the rounds with the Traffic Commission, and they've heard the details, and I think they understood it in long term, we went through two different rounds of meetings with them. Commissioner Woods was concerned, the Traffic Commissioner Woods was concerned, and went out and saw it for himself, and his response was that it was a real mess. And part of the characterization we wanted to make to the Traffic Commission and now the City Council is that we've got really two separate issues here. We've got a short-term issue and a long-term issue. The short-term issue that I think most folks, other than the Jensen Meat Company, can agree on is that it's really not fair of a company to impose themselves on all the other companies in a business park by utilizing the city service streets as their own personal parking area. Now, that's a short-term issue. If they're moving, that's going to be eventually solved, although it does pose a short-term problem for us taking deliveries when trucks are parked on the road and they can't, big trucks can't get into our facility, that is designed for large trucks. And park all of our vehicles within our facility, we have the right-sized facility for our business so that we're not imposing on our neighbors. Long-term, and this has gone on since we moved into these buildings in eighty-seven and eighty-nine, our problem is we have a nice, long, flat street. It's not very wide, though. It's not designed for big vehicles to be there any period of time, but that, the problem we've had over the years is that you have common carriers like Yellow Freight, or UPS, or FedEx, or these folks, they'll drop their trailers, which, it's a violation to drop a trailer and leave it there, they're not sighted and it is a code enforcement issue over a period of time, but it isn't against the rules right now to park there. Therefore, they've taken advantage of that and made a problem out of it. And as well, they leave the dollies, which is the piece that connects two trailers together when they take those trailers out. This has been a problem since we moved in, in eighty-seven and eighty-nine in our buildings. So the real issue is public safety, and our folks coming in and out of our business, and their ability to be able to see, not get hit by another vehicle, and certainly not be in a situation where, you know, gas is being siphoned from one vehicle to the other, which is what happened today with some of these trucks that are parked along the street. Again, that's a short-term thing, and that's a really ridiculous thing to have happen in and of itself, but really, what we need to look at is long-term, thank you.
I need you to wrap up.
I will. Long-term, we need to look at how has it been and how is it going to be in the future? The Jensen Meat thing is, it is a short-term problem, but we need to look at long-term, are we looking out for the public safety? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker, Cliff Kaiser.
I'm really confused about this issue. First off, on several reasons. One of them is, why is it on the consent calendar? This is not a traffic issue. There might be some traffic implications, but this is a business issue. You have businesses in our business park in our city here that are having challenges that need to be resolved. Has the Chamber of Commerce been consulted? Has the city's own Economic Development Director been consulted? Because they certainly weren't at the Traffic Commission, and there's no reports here, and there was no plan to bring them up here to report to you about what's going on with these business problems here in the business park. I just don't understand how we got to this point, and it's on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lane Ricard.
Sam, you know the shot of Dogwood, that is, pick up, you know, just the blank shot of that. My name's Lane Rickard, I'm from Power Plus Sound and Lighting, I am on twenty-four sixty Grand Avenue, I have been to the traffic meetings, you know, one before that, Sam, I think, there you go. I feel for Mr. Boyd, and he's absolutely right, there is some serious problems here, but at the end of the day, we are in a business park. That's what this is designed to do, is for us to bring people in and conduct business and move goods and services throughout the community. The one gentleman that's talking about the people losing their jobs, let's make this clear, Jensen Meats is moving, they've outgrown this facility, so even if we weren't here with this issue, those jobs were leaving anyway, so don't get hung up on that. When you look at this, you can see there's no curb painting at all on this, so in Mr. Boyd's defense, or not his defense, but what he should be doing, is what maybe the city should be doing, is where you have the egress and exits of the driveways pulling in, maybe we ought to paint those zones red, you know, thirty, forty feet back, so when a car's pulling out, they can safely see both directions. Secondly, you run, if you're going to put signs up, which I'm fine with that, I know there's a problem here, and most of those ideas you saw up there in the zoning meeting, or the traffic meetings, I threw out there. And when you look at this, my first plan was, put cars on the side of the street that's empty, put trucks on the other side. Sam had some viable responses to me, Mr. Boyd has some legitimate statements that he's made back about safety and the stuff sitting here. When I requested, when the sheriff was here, I said, "You currently have laws that help you, you know, facilitate this problem to go away," and it's back to what you're all saying, there's just not enough sheriffs and enough enforcement to be driving up and down that street all the time to tow vehicles. If you made it so it was on the, on the east side where those trucks are parked there, had a time limit, or no overnight parking, that would at least simplify a one-time visit of somebody driving by, and if it's after six o'clock and there's a semi there, you tow it. I do, you know, and I think if you did that on Dogwood and on Grand, and allowed the trucks to be on the north side, and on the east side with a time limit or no overnight parking, that would solve what you're looking at right there. The other thing is, is I think that if you're going to do the, if this amendment's going to move forward, or this resolution's going to move forward, since Jensen Meats is moving, and I know that it's hard to turn back the tide, could we add a caveat to this that this has a sunset to it, that it comes back in a year in front of City Council, and if they've moved out, that the City Council, so I don't have to go through a bunch of effort like Mr., like poor Mr. Boyd's had to get to this point, that there's a sunset to this. And the caveat is, if Jensen Meats has moved out and the problem's resolved, then we can remove the signs. I'll pay to remove the signs. But this is going to affect, we're going to get a tariff in this area from all the normal, everyday delivery trucks. A UPS truck is over ten thousand pounds. At the end of the day, at the bottom of Grand, every UPS truck that services that vast area, lining it up, vast area parks at the end of the street, and they throw all the next-day reds in there. They're going to just move across the street to the west side of Sycamore, and they're going to go to the south side of La Marada, so now you're going to take what is the normal commerce that should be going in our areas and get pushed off into those neighborhoods now, and then somebody over there is going to have an issue. I just think...
It really, really needs to, we let you, you ran over a little bit, so...
You're the best. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a concern about the restrictions and how that might affect future business and the property owner to be able to have this leased out to another business, and how it will affect current property owners right now. So that's one of my, one of my concerns that I wrote down, and is it possible, and I think this is what the gentleman was describing, where we can find areas where they can park on one side, like it seems like in that area that we're looking at on Dogwood Way, you could pick one side and say, "It's allowed in this area, but not on this side of the street," and then definitely red curb, you know, in front of the driveways, so that there's visibility. Because I think if, if we can just at least make it safe, I think we should be able to make it work. I mean, is that too unreasonable, or...
So the, I think we spoke to the issue of the time limit parking, which is again, the ease of, or difficulty of enforcement, that is, which is, you know, requires the two trips. Also, the one side of the street, these streets, as I mentioned, are only forty feet in width, and they're really not designed for this long-term, you know, sort of parking for these large trucks, and they do stay there for hours, and sometimes even night, overnight, and again, they're noisy, the drivers are hanging around there. I mean, we've been out there several times, and we've seen the activities, and I think it was mentioned of the siphoning of the gas, I've seen that myself, too, where two trucks were parked side by side with activities going on like that. So it's really, I mean, the traffic safety is a primary concern, and even on one side, I still would have a concern with just the continuous parking of a solid wall of the trucks there with potential for, you know, passing cars running into them. Obviously, it would be much more severe than just running into a passenger car, as well as all the other activities that go on because of the parking of these trucks. It's really, the streets are being used for, just queuing for the trucks, which takes hours and hours, and sometimes even longer, to get into the facility of the business hours and hours, and sometimes even longer, to get into the facility of the business that they serve.
So how busy is this Dogwood Way?
As far as the traffic volumes, it's not very busy. It's about 500 cars a day in total. Mostly concentrated during the day, obviously, because it's a business area nighttime. There's not much going on, but there's, you know, the peaks in the morning and in the evening, but then throughout the day, about 500 total.
Okay. Can I bring one of the speakers back up?
Sure.
Gentleman from Lamar.
You need to call up the microphone here.
I think you covered most of the points, but you had asked about parking on one side. Who's going to determine, this becomes an enforcement issue now, who's going to determine who gets to park there? Does it get to become a permanent parking lot of any one business? Is it the first man there? Because right now, there's, you know, 10 trucks parked all the way down one side of the street.
Right.
You know, is that a particular company's parking lot? Is that my parking lot, because I've been there longer than anybody else? Is it whoever's there?
It would have to be first come, first served, I guess, but...
But then you have the problem of, just leave it there. It's parked there all the time. You know, if you have, if you do overnight, well, then, like you said, the activities during the day in the business.
Wouldn't we be able to ban overnight parking?
That is certainly an option, but again, from the, you know, staff's perspective at least, the daytime activity that would that leave is still problematic to the traffic, as well as just the overall, you know, activities that go on associated with the parking of the trucks.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Councilmember Coles.
It sounds like the preponderance of this problem is generated by the Jensen trucks, and they're leaving. Will there be a residual of their business here, where those trucks might be in that vicinity even after they relocate the business? Or does the problem of their trucks go away? I want to hear what you say.
Councilmember Coles, what staff was told was that Jensen Meat would be moving 50% of their operations as of March 1st, but I'm not aware of when the other 50% would be leaving Vista to go to Chula Vista, so I think that might be your question.
Yeah, the question is, would there, would the truck parking impact continue after March to some extent in the business park? And then, yeah, please.
And maybe Mr. Valencia from Jensen Meats could ask, answer that question in terms of when they're going to be vacating the business park entirely.
First, you...
Yeah, I appreciate the question. And as I was saying before, there's a long-term and a short-term problem. The short-term problem, obviously, may be alleviated. But long-term, as I said, we've, we've been in this location since we built these buildings, since 87 and 89. It has always been a problem. It has always been a problem with trucks dropped there, and the safety of people coming in and out of our facility, not being able to see, running into these trucks, unattended trucks with these drop trailers, et cetera. So this has always been a problem, exacerbated right now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
One other, yeah, that, yeah, please answer that, and then I had one other question for Mr. Conley.
By March 1st, we'll be leaving, 50% of our business will go down to Altay Mesa, and then by September 1st, or the end of August, the other 50% will be moving.
So the trucks, there will still be residual trucks?
But a lot less.
Yep, okay. Thank you. Now, Mr. Conley, the question I have is, when we design business parks, and of course we can't go back and redesign, is there a design element that goes into street sizes for this kind of parking issue? Now, of course, we can't redo it, but is that a factor of consideration? And comparing us to other business parks in our region, how do we measure up with our street width and the need for that on-street parking?
Vista Business Park-specific plan is primarily built with 40-foot roads, 40-foot paved roads. This is a standard road width that typically allows for two lanes of parking on either side of a standard vehicle, and two lanes in each direction. That's what the majority of the parks built at. It was intended to accommodate parking for short-term needs, typically, you know, employee parking. Really wasn't envisioned to accommodate heavy truck parking. If that was the intent of the width of these streets, most likely would have been built to a larger standard, maybe 48 feet or 50 feet. It's just not typical within the park. Part of the reason we see parking in this particular area is because of the grade. It's fairly flat in this area, and so it's easy to come and drop a trailer and leave it on the street without much concern. Most of the rest of the park has grade to it, so it's hard to find flat spots. And so our concern at the staff level is even after Jensen leaves, we feel like we'll still have truck parking issues here because of the location and the grade of the street.
And yet, part of the, other business parks in our region, have they addressed this problem differently than we have, or what, or are you even aware of that?
I have talked to one other jurisdiction that has a similar problem, and they dealt with it with a parking restriction. It was dealt with with an hourly restriction, but I think they had more resources available to them, was down in San Diego. I haven't seen the issue locally in the business parks very much. Most of the properties in the business park, as you can tell by driving around, can park all of their trucks on their site. So this isn't a typical occurrence within the park.
So do you want to motion, or what is your? Do you want, I would like to have somebody address that, you know, Mr. Kaiser's thing about why does that consent? And didn't we have a, the majority of the Traffic Commission, didn't they have a public meeting and...
Yeah. Mayor, there was two meetings with the Traffic Commission on this issue. It was a majority vote to support the parking prohibition, and so therefore, staff has put it on the consent calendar for the council, knowing full well that the public can pull the item if they so chose. We also, Kevin Hamm from Economic Development, was involved in this issue behind the scenes with staff. He's not up at the podium because the traffic issue is not his, but he was very involved with Jensen Meats, with the fact that the enterprise zone issue, and understanding that Jensen Meats has been potentially leaving Vista for quite some time. So Economic Development staff was involved to speak to Mr. Kaiser's third issue involving the chamber. I'm not sure if the chamber was consulted on this issue or not, but I do know that Economic Development was definitely involved in this issue.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, after hearing both sides, I would tend to lean towards staff's recommendation on this. I think we do need to, it's one of the reasons we spend all that time interviewing for commissioners, for Traffic Commission, you know, it sounds like it's gone to Traffic Commission a couple times. Public's had the opportunity for that input. So I will make a recommendation, or make a motion to support staff's recommendation on this.
Okay. Councilmember Coles.
I, I'm prepared to second that, but, and I've listened to this as carefully as I can, and one of the reasons I asked about the original design of our business park was because that, I don't think we were designed to become a public truck parking business park. And so I think we need to be, take that into account in terms of how we attract business and the businesses that we keep here, and I would be willing to reconsider some of this gentleman's ideas that he's brought to us, but at this point, I'm prepared to second the motion as presented by staff and approved by the commission.
Okay. If no one else has any other comments, I would ask for your vote. We'll try voting on the machine here again. Okay. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. The next, next thing on our agenda, our discussion items, the first one is amending the title of mayor pro tem and appointing a deputy mayor. So, and I'm kind of guilty of this, because the mayor pro tem, people always go, "What is a mayor pro tem?" And so I think it was kind of an older term, so I was just trying to find something that was a little more, that people knew what, you know, what it meant. So that's why the deputy, I don't know if you want to change it to being a deputy mayor? And then I wanted to appoint a deputy mayor. So with that, Councilmember Aguilera.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and amend the title of mayor pro tem to deputy mayor, or make that motion. And can I make?
Yeah.
And the second part of that is I'd like to nominate fellow council member Coles as deputy mayor for a one-year term.
Okay. I'll second that. Okay. So everyone in favor, please raise your hands, I guess, again. Everyone.
Can I even vote on that?
Yes, you can vote. Yeah, he can vote on hisself, can't he? Yes, yes, you can vote. And I know it was opposed unanimously passed. So the second discussion item is the appointments of the officials to the boards, committees, and commissions. So I, we don't need to go through, do we need to read all these?
I do have a preparation, so you don't. You want me just to read it? You have to say who's going to be appointed to which committee.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Okay. Each year, the City Council updates the master list of official appointments to various committees, boards, and commissions. If the resolutions before you tonight are approved, the following appointments will be in effect for the 2013 calendar year. Councilmember Aguilera, representative, and councilmember Campbell, alternate to the North County Transit District Board. Mayor Ritter, representative, and councilmember Coles and Aguilera, first and second alternates, respectively, to the San Diego Association of Governments, Sandag Board. Mayor Chairperson Ritter and councilmember Director Coles, representatives, and councilmember Director Aguilera and sewer program director Putnam, alternates to the Encino Wastewater Authority Board. Approval of the staff recommendation will also confirm the mayor's appointments to the other agencies, and direct staff to post the changes on the city's website via the FPPC Form 806.
Okay, so I would need a motion for that.
I move to approve.
Is that a second?
I'll second.
We have two seconds. Okay, everyone in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Nope, motion passes unanimously. So with that, we're going to go to oral communications. We have two. One would be Chuck Rabel.
Good evening again for the last time.
Forever, forever, or just tonight?
Nice to see the electronics working. They didn't work on the fourth when we had a meeting, and nice to see where our $53 million went. Someday, it might work. Two items tonight. One is city flags. Friday was December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. Flag was supposed to be flown till sunset at half-staff. City flags were at half-staff until Monday morning. In the past, the American Legion has volunteered to the city, will do it again, okay, to take care of the flags when the city shut down, so things happen like they're supposed to. Anyway, I'm a veteran, I'm an American, and I was less than proud of the city of Vista for the weekend. My last item is the fan palms that don't get trimmed. We went through this a while back with Mr. Conley, particularly palms of Russ, or whatever they're called, up the hill on, up by the freeway, and Escondido Avenue, or Civic Center, if you want to call it. They're a fire hazard, a big-time fire hazard. Code compliance is not the answer. The answer is our fire marshals. We've got fire marshals that go out and gig people for not cutting down weeds, and abating the weeds, if you will. And if they don't do it, then we do it, and we fine them, or charge them. We could do the same thing with these fan palms that are truly a fire hazard. Thank you.
Do you want to answer that, city manager, Patrick?
Sure. First item was regarding the flags at half-staff. We do put the flags at half-staff, as Mr. Rabel stated. However, we don't have staff here on the weekends, whether it's a holiday on a Friday or a Saturday, and we do put the flags back up on Monday morning. Simply an issue of allocating overtime to employees to be able to do that. The second issue is regarding the Palm location right off of the freeway, and it's not a very desirable look. We do have, on an annual basis, we get complaints. We have the fire marshal go out and inspect to make sure that it's not a fire hazard, and each of the last four years, I believe, there has been a fire marshal that's gone out and stated that it's not a fire hazard. And so we have gotten complaints, and we go out and look at it. We'd much rather have that property have a different look or feel to it, but unfortunately, the property owner's not in any city violation.
Okay. Our next speaker is John, is it Hannover?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. The reason I'm here is that I live on Mountain Pass, and I represent about eight neighbors. And I guess regarding, it's at the intersection of Melrose and Sycamore, and where there's a hotel that was established back in 2010. And originally, I think it was supposed to be a mini mall, and later on, it was decided that it would be a hotel, a two-story hotel, and later on, a three-story hotel. To make the long story short, the name, there was a stipulation at that time for the hotel to insulate the hotel from all the properties that are in the back with the trees. And it's been almost two years, and the trees are completely ineffective in terms of privacy, to the point that everybody's looking at our backyards from the hotels. And of course, I'm sure the hotel doesn't want to look at our backyards, and we don't want to look at their hotel windows. And this is what this looks like right now. And we don't have any resources, as far as the, a whole lot of the resources at least, on the plantation of trees. We did our best, but this is the best we could do. And I'm sure, you know, we can probably take some steps in making this a little bit better for both, win-win situation. We have contacted a local distributor for bamboo trees that can go up to about 50, 60, and very inexpensive. And we're hoping, with the leverage that we have with the stipulation on the privacy that the councilman has established back in 2010, we can actually take some steps toward making this happen, which hopefully not only going to upgrade the hotel, but also our privacy and property values at the same time.
Did you talk to the hotel about it, and ask them if they would help?
Not yet. I wanted to see, first of all, go through the City Council, because that was, there was a stipulation for this, and see how much levers we have from there before we talk to the hotel.
Yeah, as was discussed when the Melrose Wine and Spirits issue came before the City Council, I believe it was Mr. Conley that mentioned that the landscape, that the developer has complied with all the landscape plans that were required of them when they built the hotel. So from a city perspective, we don't have any sort of regulation or authority over forcing them to plant, but certainly, it could be requested, or it could be requested through the residents in the neighborhood.
So, or he could actually talk to the hotel, the manager of that shopping center, that hotel. I would try talking to them first, and then see if they would, you know, be willing to help you with that.
Okay. Yeah, well, we'll try to go through that route, but also, there's other neighbors that were concerned about this privacy issue heavily. I mean, everybody's basically looking down our backyards from the hotel, and not very, I'm sure they don't want to do that, but... I'm sure they don't want to do that, but we don't want to look at their hotels either.
Did you look at a price on the bamboo? What would it cost to put bamboo along there?
Yes, in fact, the, there's everywhere you can look, it's anywhere for one bamboo tree, which can go up to sixty feet, you know, everywhere else is like a hundred thirty, but this local distributor is between fifty and eighty, depending on.
For each, each plant?
Yes. So it's not that expensive.
How many plants would you think it would take?
I would say probably fifty to cover, because they also grow once when, and once when you plant one, within a couple of years, they start rejuvenating from the side of the bamboo tree so they can grow up, grow more, so, and completely insulated like a wall, very nice breeze, very great scenery that would benefit, I think, the whole community and upgrade the neighborhood rather than decay it.
Okay, anybody have any comments on that? I would just tell you to go talk to them and then let us know what they say.
Okay.
Okay?
I'll do, thank you.
I think the speaker slipped, but trying to ask one question, ask a few more things.
It's up to you, Jesus. I don't care.
It's up to you guys. You want to hear one more question? Well, what do you, all right, okay, make it short.
As regards to the matter we just discussed, after Jensen is gone, what are the procedures to either have the GVW lifted to a higher GVW for trucks to park in the two areas we discussed?
Oh, you know what? That's already kind of taken care of for now.
Okay, well, how do I find out how to undo this when Jensen's gone? Maybe that's my question.
You can talk to Sam Hassan in the Traffic Engineering Department and he can inform you on the procedures to make modifications or changes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so with that, then, we have any remarks from anybody? Have anything you want to say? Councilmember Rigby?
I just wanted to say, and I'm sorry I didn't say it earlier, with the Rancho Buena Vista adobe, I'm a very proud member of the Daughters of American Revolution with the Rancho Buena Vista chapter. And we do a lot of events over at the adobe and they're always very kind and welcoming and very gracious. It's a beautiful place and it is truly an asset to the city. And I'm proud to go over there and help decorate every Christmas.
Oh, well, thank you.
And I also wanted to say thank you, city staff and fellow council members. Everybody has been very gracious to me and I am assuming to Cody as well in welcoming me to the city council. So thank you for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coles?
Yes, I want to extend my congratulations to both council member Cody and council member Rigby. I apologize for not being at your swearing-in. I had a family commitment that I couldn't get out of. And I really did miss that occasion because that's always fun for you and your families. But welcome, and I think you'll enjoy this time with us. We're a pretty good group to work with. We have a good city, good staff, and that makes our job easier. Also, last week, the chamber had its holiday sundowner out at the Marriott, which was a fine event, well-attended and worth going to and networking with people in our community. Also, last week, we had the city service awards breakfast. And I think those of us that went were proud of the time spent by our employees and the service that they've contributed to our city. So with that, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell? Nothing? Councilmember Aguilera?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to make a quick report on Sandag meeting that I attended last Friday. Really just part of it. And I got a couple of reports on, from La Mesa in the city of Imperial Beach on their use of smart growth and mixed use in their cities. And I was just really impressed with what they've done. And also, kind of gives, made me proud in that Vista's, you know, general plan was our, you know, they put us up there along with several other cities. And some of these cities are just playing catch-up at this point to the city of Vista, I feel, in these areas. Although I do feel like La Mesa's made a lot of progress in their city and how they've progressed. And they plan on, you know, getting denser, apparently, in their downtown, which is really impressive. It's already got quite a bit of the housing in that area, but they're planning on adding affordable housing. So it was just a really good presentation. It's fun to see what other cities are doing and that a lot of them are moving in the same direction that we're moving in. And like I said, it seems like La Mesa's had a lot of success in that area. And so anyhow, it was a positive experience. I'm looking forward to working with our two new council people and I welcome them again and look forward to a little time off for the holidays here, celebrating Christmas with my family. And I hope that staff enjoys it with their family as well. And I think that's it for me.
City manager, Patrick Johnson?
Just wanted to say that as all of you know, we're going to be celebrating our fiftieth anniversary coming up next year. And so for the public, check out the city's website at cityofvista.com/50, five-oh, for updates on that. And speaking of holidays, we're very likely going to have the twelve-twenty-seven. It's a December twenty-seventh meeting canceled, unless there's some sort of an emergency that crops up, which we don't foresee at this point. And I wanted to let you know that the city offices will be closed on December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first, each day prior to the holiday.
The twenty-fifth too?
The twenty-fifth and the first, yeah. Those are designated city holidays, but the day before the holidays, they'll be closed as well. So happy holidays to all of you.
Darryl, our city attorney, Joe Piper?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say it's been an enjoyable first meeting and I hope that our new council members have found it enjoyable as well. I'm confident we'll not have another meeting in December, so I'm saying to everyone, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Well, and I would say it was great working with you guys. I look forward to working a few more years together and I think we'll make a good council. I was, I think it went very well today with our first meeting and I was very proud to be at your swearing-in. I thought that went really nice, that whole day. And so I would just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and have a good restful time for the next couple of weeks and then we'll hit it in January. So with that, we are adjourned.